I'd like to start with all of our great students tonight. We're going to have Greg Pyke come up with some votes from the Des Moines Library, and let's, uh, let's probably which one on, Greg?
Well, tonight, we would like to have you read a proclamation for the city for the summer reading program. The summer reading program, we have approximately 6,000 children in the city that sign up for the summer reading program, but the overall reading program touches over 30,000 of our childrens and teens throughout the Des Moines area. And so tonight, we have Kevin Tuckaw, the president of the library board, we have Jennifer Fear, she is the most recent board member on the library board, and who do you, who have you brought today?
Lily, she's my fourth grader, she's 10, and Owen is in first grade and is seven.
And Kevin Broad.
Grace.
Grace is nine, she's in third grade. Hello, Al.
And then, we have Sarah Sheldon, she is a children's librarian from the library.
All right, let me quickly get to the front here, and I'll, uh, read our proclamation. Proclamation reads as follows: "Des Moines Public Library offers two free summer reading programs at all six locations per children. The Dream Big Read and Teens Own the Night. And whereas the library's summer reading is designed to make reading and independent learning fun and attractive, and whereas studies show in-classroom teachers can attest that summer reading improves learning skills and ensures subject retention. And whereas offering incentives for reading over the summer encourages children and teens to read more, dream more, and maintain their learning skills for the next year's classroom experience. And whereas the Des Moines Public Library's summer reading programs are made possible thanks to the funding from the Des Moines Public Library Foundation with generous support from the Bright Foundation, Prairie Meadows, the ITA Group, Principal Financial Group Bank, and Bank of America, all with the same goal of keeping children and teens reading all summer long." Now, therefore, I, the mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and all of our cities, uh, citizens in the city of Des Moines, hereby proclaim the month of June 2012 as Dream Big Read and Own the Night in the city of Des Moines, and I urge all of our citizens and civic organizations to visit your local library to learn more about the many ways they contribute to our education, lifelong learning, and quality of life. Let's hear these guys. (applause) Kevin, I'm going to give you the...
Take one more.
All right, good. Have a testimony over there, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I won't say a word. Absolutely. Wait a minute, we, you guys might as well stay up here. Let's do it, shall we? (inaudible).
Hello, I'm Grace Tuckaw, and I'm here to say, um, how amazing the summer reading program is. Well, first of all, it's really fun. Second of all, it helps you become a better reader. Kids love to get prizes, so why not start a program to get kids to read, and if they read, get prizes? Not only does it persuade kids to read for the summer reading program, but it persuades them to read outside of the program, because kids will learn to enjoy to read. I think this program's great. I look forward to it every summer.
Meeting, and, uh, for June 11th, scheduled to start at 4:20.
Thank you.
All right. All right, for those of you that are excited for the rest of our evening, why, hang tight, we're going to get started right now, uh, with some of our meeting, and we'll start Sorry for everybody, we're running a minute or so late. City Council right about 4:30. Uh, I will ask clerk to take role, please. Thanks.
County?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grace?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Minor?
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, item two is the authorization of the city manager to release mortgage and related security instruments pursuant to the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program for the following. A is for Victor Campos at 857 Southeast Park Avenue, Board Communication Number 12-263. B is Lisa Sanchez of 3407 62nd, and C is Yolanda Scott of 1721 Oakland Avenue, Board Communication Number 12-264. Is there any discussion, any questions from the board? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience has any questions like, uh, further clarification? Seeing none, could we have a motion for item two, A, B, and C?
I'd move item two, A, B, and C.
All right, it's been moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Passes unanimously, items two, A, B, and C. So, item three is a motion to adjourn.
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we sit adjourned. City Council meeting will start in approximately two minutes.
Well, I was scheduled to go out to the continent western.[370.13]
Important right in a council whose mission is to grow the American economy by expanding our presence globally. And in 2011, the nation achieved an all-time high of $2.1 trillion in exports. Among our other accomplishments, the council has been instrumental in the administration's commitment to increase travel and tourism, which is our largest service export. By shortening visa times, it also has supported free trade agreements such as those with South Korea and Colombia that will create even more markets for our U.S. exporters. It is tackling the critical issues of closing those skill gaps that manufacturers often face when job opportunity exists and but not, you know, the number of skilled workers to fill them. So certainly, education plays a big part in our future job opportunities, not only here but worldwide. As a member of the Conference of Mayors Metro Exports and Ports Task Force, we will work with the President's Council to develop strategic policies that benefit our cities and hopefully we'll have a great voice at the table for Iowa and the city of Des Moines. In fact, next week, I will be part of a trade delegation to China, to Nanjing specifically, to work with not only U.S. mayors but mayors from China on establishing how local government, state government, and federal government work together with the private sector to establish not only good relations between government but between our local businesses. Nearly forty percent of the nation's real growth in gross domestic product over the next decade will come from exports. Iowa's agricultural products and leading manufacturers such as Vermeer will lead the way. And the President's Export Council is leading the way by addressing the policy issues that will help us to achieve this growth and more. Iowa is well represented, and I think we're proud to be part of it. So I want to give you that update on that particular piece. Also, I attended the National Urban and Community Forestry Advisory Council. We are working very hard to put out a message that communicates directly to local government, state government, federal government on the importance of forestry and more specifically urban forestry in the future of our country. Because the majority of people now live in urban areas. And I think that it's important that we address it and let people know and educate them about the benefits of urban forestry. Also, we had a separate meeting and our member, councilmember Skip Moore, attended with Tom Tidwell, who is the chief in charge of U.S. forestry. Did you want to make a couple of comments, Skip, about that particular discussion?
I just thought the meeting went very well. I actually attended the last couple hours of the NUCFAC meeting. And some of the information that we heard there was that the USDA is prepared to increase the funding for U.S. forests by $20 million a year. After we met with Chief Tidwell, he said our timing was perfect, that they need support from local governments like ours in order to start seeing that some more of the funding goes towards urban forestry instead of into the commodities market, which is timber. And I think we did very well, and hopefully Frank can take the, carry the message on to the Conference of Mayors. We need other cities to take up the charge along with us. But I think it was a very good meeting.
All right. Skip, thank you. And so let's move on. Our item two, by the way, for media that is interested, we have a copy of the statement regarding the President's Export Council and be happy to share that with you. So the clerk has copies of that and also in our council mayor's office at the entrance if, I think we, if you want to get a copy of that before five o'clock. But any rate, I'll ask, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
All right. It has been a request from some folks who are here this evening that have some other commitments a little later to move item fifty, which one is it?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-nine. So it's to be moved forward correctly right after our consent agenda. Will that work for you, gentlemen? Okay, so we're going to try to move fifty-nine to right after the consent agenda, but that's the only amendment that I have been asked to make folks aware of. Anything else? Hearing none, could we have a motion to approve?
Move.
As amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through forty-five. And the, those items are presented as one roll call vote, with the exception that unless a council member or a member of the audience asks for further clarification or discussion of an item, we will pull that for further discussion. Tonight, again, those are items three through forty-five. Item five, councilmember County and Moore vote no. Item six, councilmember Coleman votes no. Item fifteen, councilmember Mahaffey has a conflict. Item twenty-one, councilmember Moore has a conflict. And item twenty-five, councilmember Moore has asked to pull that for discussion and to speak to that item.
Mr. Mayor, can I add, I'd like to speak on item thirty-four, please.
Okay. All right. Are there any more? Does anyone in the audience have an item they'd like to have pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, could we have a motion for the balance, please?
Move.
Seven yes?
All right, that takes us to item twenty-five. And item twenty-five is on a request from Alawi Habib to rezone 2410 Hickman Road from limited C-2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial to C-2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial to allow for use of the property for a vehicle display lot. That is going to be on our council agenda for the 25th day of June. So we're setting a date of hearing. And Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand this is for setting date of a hearing. However, there's an immediate need. I've received numerous calls about them removing trees on the lot next to this already. One of the people I thought was going to be here tonight to speak to it, but I don't see her. However, I did speak with Phil Dellafield immediately before the council. And if Phil could approach the mic and explain to us the issue with the trees.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Phil Dellafield, Community Development Department. As Mr. Moore has indicated, there was a complaint received by city staff regarding removal of trees on the eastern portion of this property. Staff has been on site. We have documented the trees that have been cut down, and the tree mitigation ordinance is in effect. So when the project comes forward for redevelopment, if it comes forward, the mitigation ordinance would require the replacement of those trees that have been removed.
Thank you, Phil. I'll move twenty-five.
All right, that takes us to item thirty-four, which the city manager's request for a tax sales certificate from the Polk County Treasurer's Office for the public nuisance at 650-18th Street and assigned to a developer for rehabilitation. Council Communication number twelve dash three oh one. Mrs. Hensley.
Thank you. We have letters of support and a great deal of support from the Sherman Hill Neighborhood Association. And Rob's done a great job on other projects throughout the Sherman Hill area. What I would like to ask, in addition to this tax certificate for the property 650-18th that we also look at, and I know we've had, I've had conversations with Phil on this as well, 679-18th Street. And the other property is for, I don't have the address, but we all know it as The Mansion. It's the burned-out structure in Sherman Hill. It's my understanding that those tax certificates are coming up and available. And I have received calls from individuals that are wanting to pursue those, that would have the financial ability to do so. So if we could, my motion will be to ask the staff to work and make sure that we get those two properties in particular on the next council agenda. Okay? So my motion is to move forward with those other two properties and have them on the next agenda. And good luck, Rob.
Seven yes?
All right, that completes the consent agenda. And that takes us to item fifty-nine, which we moved up. It's approving the master plan by the Greater Des Moines Botanical Center. For the botanical center itself, Council Communication number twelve dash two ninety-eight. We have had numerous opportunities to take a look at it. I will ask the botanical center folks if they have, want to make a statement prior to our vote.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This evening, we have several board members from our friends and from our governing board, the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden, here in support of this. We have made stops at Planning and Zoning and Parks and Recreation and Urban Design Review and have received support through all those committees. And so we're here at our final stop to get approval on our master plan.
For the record, if you'd give us your name and address, please.
Stephanie Judala, President and CEO of the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden.
Thank you very much.
So I would ask that our board and our supporters stand and just show support of it. And we're here to answer any of your questions that you may have at this point.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? It looks like Mr. Coleman.
I was just going to say, that's the politest way I've ever heard referred to, our many committees and hoops that we make people jump through. That was polite. Thank you.
I would just add, I think the project is great. I'm excited about it. It sounds like the fundraising is going very, very well and anxious for it to move forward. So thank you for all of your efforts on it. Appreciate it.
Since your council communication, I would be pleased to share with you that we are just over $10 million in our fundraising to date. Your council communication had us just a little below $10 million. The $10 million was what was agreed upon in our lease with the city that we had reached $10 million to proceed. $2 million of that goes towards an endowment.
So the construction then is expected to begin in?
We would begin in 2013.
Okay.
So the lease would commence on January 1st, 2013, when Waterworks stops their operations and we begin. And we would have some initial construction in the beginning of January, February, but majority of the construction would start March forward.
Great. Great project.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to say too, I want to thank everybody. It's such a wonderful project, and you all have worked very hard, and I can't believe how far you've come. So I think it's.
Thank you.
I think it's great.
Skip?
I'm just curious, when you appeared in front of Parks and Rec, was there any opposition to this?
There was a comment from the Northeast Neighborhood Association where they shared their concern about closing Robert D. Ray Road, which was addressed in our previous approval from the city as we started our lease. I will continue to work with the Northeast Neighborhood Association to help them understand the project and to, for us to understand their concerns as well. But we did receive full support of the Parks and Recreation Board.
All right. Bob?
Yeah, I think it's a great project. I can't wait for it to get going and so we have that, so we have, you know, world-class gardens down here on, along our river. So it's a great project, and I compliment you on all your efforts.
Thank you.
And I'll just echo everything that's been said. We are very supportive and thank you so much for all of you that spent so much time pulling this team together to make this happen. We look forward to watching the spades go into the ground and getting started on it. So let's finish up the fundraising and anything we can do to help along the way to either assuage the concerns of the neighbors or to help this project move along, we're here to help you. So thank you very much for all your efforts. With that, if somebody will move item fifty-nine, Ms.?
I will move item.
Joe, did you want to say something?
Oh.
Joe Galloay, 3622 Davidson Road, Park Board Chair. Just to follow up on councilmember Moore's question, we had every single member of the park board there, all fifteen members, and it was unanimous vote in favor of this. We looked at it a number of times. As you know, the park board is not just a rubber stamp. We've been fiercely divided on some issues in the past, but on this one, it was unanimous vote.
All right. Joe, thank you.
With that being said, I'll move item fifty-nine.
Six yes, one no.
All right, that takes us back to item forty-six. So thank you all very much for coming down. Item forty-six is a final consideration on a request from Arnold DeWitt to rezone property at 1241 East 18th Street from R-160, one-family, low-density residential to a limited C-2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial. Is there anyone here to speak to this? Seeing none?
Mayor?
Yes.
Until we have Mr. DeWitt here to advise us as to when construction will begin, I prefer to continue this item.
Is there, is there a point where?
If he's not able to?
You just cannot support it?
If, if he's not able to build or he chooses not to for reason of tax abatements, it's already been rezoned and the property can be put on the market not to be used for the issues, anything that would fall into that zoning.
Mr. Mahaffey, do you have any updated information?
Well, I talked to Arnie today, and he plans on going ahead with this. But I did not ask him about the specific questions that Skip has brought up. And so just to clarify what he wants to do, I guess I would like to see us continue it for one more meeting. And then we'll, in the meantime, we'll talk to him and see what. My understanding was he got some additional bids and that he was going forward. But I didn't ask him specifically about construction starting.
I'll respect that, Mr. Mahaffey, but I just really am appalled at the hoops we've made this developer jump, jump through.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just completely.
Christine, I'm appalled at what he's done to that neighborhood. They've been messing around with this for a year. His story has changed at every turn. He actually told a person from P&amp;Z the reason he didn't want us to finalize this last meetings because he might withdraw it because he may not have the financing to do it.
I just think it's unfair still, the timeline.
But you're right, Christine. We have made him jump through a lot more hoops than what we've asked other people to do, other contractors.
You're exactly right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are we delaying it in case he comes later in the meeting?
Continuing.
So we could take it up if he came or?
Yeah, if he showed up back then, we could take it back up.
I just want, but somebody said the next meeting, and somebody else said until he got here.
If he would come, I would like to get it done.
I just wanted to make sure that, that we could do that.
Seven yes?
All right, item forty-seven has been withdrawn. Next items are hearings, but we are not quite ready to open those. So let's quickly move to item sixty. Item sixty is a change to the debt management policy to allow for the issuance of general obligation debt to benefit city enterprise funds. The Council Communications number twelve dash three zero five. We've had some discussion at council workshops on this. The manager is asked to have this put on. So A is to set the date of hearing on the following general obligation bonds for the 25th day of June 2012. One is not to exceed $13,500,000 sanitary sewer bonds for an essential corporate purposes. Council Communication number twelve dash two seventy. Two is not to exceed $11 million for stormwater bonds, essential corporate purposes. Council Communication number twelve dash two seventy-one. And three is not to exceed $13,500,000 parking bonds, urban renewal purposes. Council Communication number twelve dash two seventy-seven. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to have discussion of this?
If not, Mayor, I move sixty.
A, sixty-one, sixty, A one, A two, and A three.
All right. It's been moved. Any discussion?
I appreciate the city manager's additional effort for information on that.
I'd just like to have it clarified that once we get this and we get this behind us, we go back to our eighty percent, that we won't exceed the eighty percent that's been established as far as our percentage.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Please.
Mr. Mahaffey, councilmembers, there were originally two aspects of this change that we talked about. One was looking at our limitation on the amount of geo-debt that we can incur, which was eighty percent of the statutory amount. And the other aspect of change had to do with the ability to use our geo-debt capacity to finance our sewer and parking utilities. Since that time, we've really come to the conclusion that increasing the limits in terms of the dollar amount, although that may be a topic of discussion at some point in the future, it does not appear to be necessary now. So we're not recommending that at this time. We are, however, suggesting that you consider utilizing your geo-debt capacity to finance the debt that we need to incur for sewer and parking improvements. And the reason for that, and so everybody understands, it is a way for us to lower the cost of that debt. And since both of those, I call them utilities, the parking utility and the sewer utilities, plural, is they are both experiencing a lot of cost, and this is part of our effort to lower the cost as much as we reasonably can, and we recommend it to you for that reason.
No, I agree with that, but I thought at some point, I read there that it could exceed the eighty up to eighty-two percent and then go back, hopefully, 2014 or so.
Correct. If.
I think that the manager's point here is that he's not intending to do that at this time. It's not necessary in his, in this item and is not suggesting that that's what we're doing.
That is correct. But, but we're going to monitor that. And as Mr. Mahaffey indicates, there may be, maybe a time when that issue would have to be revisited. And by the way, the way this is structured, if you look at the email that Scott Sanders prepared, each and every time we come back to you with a utility bond issue, we'll raise this issue again, give you the numbers, so that you can monitor this very carefully.
Perfect.
All right. Thanks, Bob.
Seven yes?
All right, that takes us to the hearing items. We will begin on item forty-eight and let's say five oh three. Item forty-eight is on the proposed amendment to the third 2012 year action plan of the 2010-2014 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD Consolidated Plan. Council Communication number twelve dash three oh seven. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to, has any questions regarding HUD in the 2012 action plan?
I'll move forty-eight.
Seeing none. Item forty-eight has been moved. Any discussion by council? Seeing none, Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
If you could punch your, your vote there.
Seven yes?
Item forty-nine, on appeal of James Tully from the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission regarding retention of a fence at 409 Franklin Avenue. Council Communication number twelve dash two ninety-nine. It's my understanding, by the way, that the Historic Preservation Commission has spent quite a bit of time regarding this, this piece. And item A is affirming that decision, or B is an alternate resolution reversing the decision. Again, that is a retention of a fence at 409 Franklin Avenue. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to that item?
I'm not.
All right, anybody that's, we would ask that anybody that's going to speak, we would get over on this side so we have an idea. We've got two people, looks like, maybe? You're correct?
Do I have to, do you want to count her?
Let's, let's give her a full.
Name?
Should we, should I count her? Is a, is a, is a full?
Contained.
Okay. Oh, we got another one, too. All right. No, step forward and give us your name and address, please.
My name's Danielle Duquette, and I live at the address 409 Franklin Avenue. Neighbors helping neighbors. Okay, well, I live at the address, and we actually put the fence up. And mostly, I guess, I just am appealing the decision because they're basically asking us to turn our privacy fence that we put up as a safety barrier, mostly for our children. Our eldest daughter was threatened in our own driveway about two weeks before we put the fence up with her life. It wasn't enough to, it was enough for me to feel like I needed the fence for my children's privacy or my children's safety. But they're asking us to basically make it a picket fence now by chopping two feet off of it and widening the slats. This fence was actually supposed to be constructed in August as part of us living in the home and taking care of the home. We were supposed to do that in August, but given family circumstances, we weren't able to get it done. Now, my reason for saying that is if we had done it in August, the historic preservation would not even have been involved. And so I guess my reason for being here is just to ask if it's possible for us to in some way be, I don't know, grandfathered in. Yeah, and it was motions during their meeting for that, but turned down. And like I said, if it's turned into a picket fence situation, then my kids are accessible by anybody from the street. They could pick my youngest up right up over the fence if they wanted to. We have young dogs. We moved into this neighborhood knowing that it was not the safest neighborhood, but it was also with the idea that we have the entire privacy fence. Since we've moved in, we've had meth drug users removed from the house next door, drunk people roaming our street at all hours of night. And like I said, we moved in full well knowing this by, with the idea that the privacy fence would be there to protect our children. So that's my, my mother's appeal to, to just keep it as is. We would love the idea of putting bushes in front of it as a compromise, kind of maybe shelter it from the street and not make it look so offensive, but.
Thank you. Sure.
Mayor and council, Mike Hillburn, 410 Franklin Avenue. I'm directly across the street from this property. And I want my neighbors to know, I am not here as a neighbor. I'm here representing the Riverbend Neighborhood Association as the president of the association. And I'm here as a member of the housing committee who worked hundreds of hours walking the district, drumming up support. I'm also here as a housing committee member who spent hundreds of my own dollars doing mailings to inform the property owners of the district of what we were doing, what the restrictions were. And we sent that out to property owners, and I spent my own money on numerous items, as well as mailings afterwards to inform them that we were now in a district and what the restrictions were, and that the housing committee members were available to help with filling out the appropriate paperwork and working through the system. The reason, the reason I am speaking on the item is I want the council to have all the facts. Besides what you have printed in front of you and what was included in the letter of support that I sent from the board of directors, the one thing that's not in there that I need the council to know is before the first hole of that fence was dug, I printed off the fencing restrictions and walked them over to what I would feel would be an uncomfortable conversation with my neighbor to inform them that they're in a historic district, and here are the guidelines. And one of the first items were to acquire a permit. At that point, they would have been aware of all the restrictions had they not read the, the guidelines. It was a very, it was a somewhat cordial conversation. As the resident brought up, she voiced her concern of the neighborhood. There was a few remarks that were offensive to me, only from the fact that I've grown to love this neighborhood and I worked very hard, probably too many hours, to, to support what's going on there. But we talked business, and I went home. Afterwards, and I also informed the resident of the historic commission member that lived just off the street, Brianne Bye. According to Brianne, she did, the resident did come up and discuss it with her. I wasn't part of that conversation, but one thing that. I wasn't part of that conversation, but one thing that Brianne did mention is the same thing that the resident mentioned to me when she showed up at my door afterwards, that they were, that they looked at the guidelines, and instead of asking for permission, they were going to ask for forgiveness. I think that should weigh heavily into this, that we could have done it right the first time. I offered to help with the paperwork in the process, and they chose to go ahead and move forward. So, I think a lot of this grandfathering and any of that shouldn't be considered because of the fact that they knew before they put the fence in that there were guidelines and we would end up in this situation. And as I stated in the letter of support, over, a majority of the property owners in this district supported it, and they expect the requirements to be supported uniformly. And I would urge the council to support the ruling by the Historic Preservation Commission, and I would encourage anyone that feels that their neighborhood is not what it is to talk to their neighborhood association and work with them, because there's many people that's probably been in your shoes, and we've worked through these issues, and we help our neighbors out. Thank you.
Mike, can you answer? Do you know, did they sign the petition?
The owners of the property did, not the people occupying the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Any other questions? Anybody?
Maybe for Jeff. I'm just surprised that the tenant of the property is the appeal, the one making the appeal. Is that... I assume they have standing to do that, but this is a...
Excuse me. As I understand, the actual appeal was made by the owner, Mr. Tully. She's here speaking on his behalf, but the actual appeal, as I understand, it was filed by Mr. Tully.
And Mr. Tully signed it originally?
That is correct. The property owner signed it.
Yeah.
They were actually a member of the housing committee working on the petition before they moved.
I think we've got a word, councilmember, that has a point.
I was just going to say, I understand your situation. I have two small children as well. And I understand your concern with your daughter being threatened. Certainly, that, you know, would cause me to want to build a fence, too. I understand what you're saying. I think the historic district is one way that the city can see the neighborhood become safer in a similar way that Sherman Hill has become really the pride of Des Moines. I mean, people really embrace Sherman Hill based on the historic district. And I agree with Mr. Hildebrand that countless hours went into planning, organizing, getting the signatures for the historic district. It's something that the neighborhood supports. And if you look at our agenda just tonight, there's two items that are coming up to be discussed on this fairly new historic district. And I think if we don't hold the line now, it's going to be, it's going to be tough to have any sort of consistency moving forward. So, my motion would be to affirm the historic preservation's decision tonight.
Appreciate the additional information.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Any additional discussion?
Seven yes?
All right. So, the, for you, the motion has been to accept the Historic Preservation Commission's recommendation, and it has been accepted by this body unanimously. So, not sure exactly. You could talk to our community development folks to see what your next move is, but I would suggest you do that, and then permitting department as well, to make sure that whatever it is that you're going to do is within the guidelines. Yes.
I'd be willing to help out with whatever needs to be done, labor-wise as well as through the process, and also if you feel that there's problems, you can give me a call and we'll press the street.
All right. If you have an offer, if you guys want to discuss it further on the hall, we'd be happy to have you do that. We're going to move on to item fifty. It's on the appeal of Donald Crouch from the Decision Historic Preservation Commission for construction of a deck at nineteen fifty-seven Arlington Avenue, Council Communication number twelve dash two eighty-one. A is affirming that decision, or B, an alternate resolution reversing the decision. Is there anybody in the audience here to discuss that particular item? Yes, sir?
I'm Don Crouch.
Yes, sir. Step forward. If, just for the record, Don, if you'd give us your name and address, it goes into the spoken...
I'm Donald Crouch. I live at nineteen fifty-seven Arlington.
Thank you.
Is this on?
Yes. Yes.
That's the house we're talking about. I'm here to appeal the decision on the decking, not the deck itself, but the railing around the deck. This house, I might mention, I've lived in this area. I was born in this house in nineteen thirty-nine. I'm not a new person to the Riverbend area. This house is one of those after the war that was turned into apartments. And then, in the seventies, my wife and I and the family moved back into it, and we converted it back into a single-family residence and put the porch back on in the garage where it used to be a carport. We've done a lot of work to this house, spent a lot of money on it. And this year, we wanted to put a deck on the backside so we could look down on the river and watch the boats and have a place to drink coffee. So, I went down to the building department. They went through it with me and laid it out on how far, how big a deck I could build and everything. And they said, while I'm here, let's make out a permit. And I said, all right. Well, it turned out, before he got the permit wrote up, but before he got it paid for, why somebody come by and said, he's in the historic society. He's got to get a certificate of appropriation. So, that stopped it, and we went and made a certificate, or got a certificate, and I went before the board. The deck itself was all right, but they didn't like the vinyl railing. They said I could put wooden or treated lumber, or I could put composite railing wood. It made very little sense to me. Treated lumber is hard to paint. We wanted to trim it out in white, and it rots out, and it requires an awful lot of maintenance. The composite lumber, I didn't know too much about, except I found out that it's just a man-made material, a plastic and wood fiber. Not really available back in eighteen ninety-six that the house was built. And the vinyl was the same way. It's, it wasn't available. It wasn't available until about nineteen twenty. But both the composite lumber and the vinyl have very little maintenance, except for washing. They won't rot or anything else. But when they said that I could go with vinyl, or go with wood, or composite lumber, when they said composite lumber, as far as I'm concerned, they opened up vinyl. Vinyl and composite lumber are one and the same thing. The vinyl has a little better warranty. It has a lifetime warranty. Composite lumber has twenty or ten years. Vinyl costs about half as much as that composite liner, but they're both man-made materials. Neither one available in the period of eighteen ninety. I don't understand for the life of me why it's my house, I'm paying for it, both things are equal, why I don't have the choice of putting vinyl in there instead of composite lumber. So, I guess that's my argument. I might mention, I didn't vote for the...
Do you have a picture of the deck on the back there?
No, I have a picture of where the deck is located.
Mike, do you have a picture of it?
That's the subject property, nineteen fifty-seven Arlington. Nineteen fifty-seven. There's the front of the house. This is the rear of the house where the deck would be added.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it. Mike, is that a vinyl railing going up the front steps, sir?
I don't have information on the...
Wait a minute. Right there. Show the front of the house. No, it is not. Is that...
I know that's the one here also.
White, I was wondering if I was... Like I say, I didn't do...
Mike, let me ask a question, as long as we have you up here. Is the design of that rail, if that's what he's using, is that design acceptable? Of the rail?
I believe the design was fine as far as spacing of pickets, things like that. It was just the materials that they were concerned about. And the guidelines do say that it's either a wood material or a composite wood material that should be used on railings.
Does it have to do with safety or strength?
Well, I think in the minutes of the meeting, there was some discussion about that, and I think Commissioner Marchand had commented about the durability of the vinyl railing in winter months, such as when the vinyl gets brittle at cold temperatures. There was concern about that, yes.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody has a...
I guess I would like to hear, Mike, from you. Generally, my philosophy to the same, or to the previous item would hold true concerning the historic district. I guess I have less of an issue with this one, as it's not on the front of the house. It's not something that's noticeable by the neighborhood. So, I guess I just wanted your sense, and I imagine what you're going to say, but I just wanted to make sure I was on the same page with you.
Mike Hildebrand, four-ten Franklin Avenue. First of all, I commend the Crouch's for following the process. They have, they did not sign the petition. They were opposed to it, as they have a right to. They appeared at the Historic Preservation Commission's hearing. They opposed it. P and Z, they were not there, and at council, they were not there. But then, they have attended workshops for historic tax credits and such. They've applied appropriately, so I commend them on following the process. Councilman Grease, as you said earlier, if you start picking it apart, it's, as we've seen with Conlon Properties, I believe you need to hold the line. The requirements are the same for everyone. The Crouch's have done a wonderful job on their house, and that was one of the arguments, that they are going to keep it nice, and they're going to do the right thing. The problem is, we have about two hundred other properties in the district that will not do the right thing. So, unfortunately, I believe that every, the rules have to be followed. They need to be followed across the board. So, and as I did with the letter, the board supports the Historic Preservation Commission's ruling.
And so, Mike, it's my understanding that the project has not been started yet, so we're going through the appeal process. So, he has waited to... Okay.
No, you're wrong. The deck is built. The railing is not built.
Oh, okay.
But the railing was the only issue. The deck was okay. That's built.
Yeah. I got a permit for the deck, and the deck is built.
Okay. So, those pictures aren't quite up to date, then, are they?
It was the commission a month ago, so...
Mike, what about that lattice work on the underneath side of the deck?
That's a picture. That's not my lattice.
Oh, that's not yours?
No.
Oh.
That's just a picture of the railing.
I thought the same thing, Mike.
I will go ahead and uphold the historic preservation district's decision. Mr. Crouch, you have a beautiful home, and I agree with Mike. I do think we have to be consistent moving forward. I think this is less intrusive into the neighborhood as maybe a picket fence on the front of the house, but nonetheless, I think if we bend here on this, then we'll bend down the road, and we won't have the consistency in the historic district we're after. So, I will uphold the, or I will move to uphold the historic district's decision.
As I vote on this, and I voted no, I sort of agree with Mr. Crouch. I would like, at least, my vote, not so much that anything against the Historic Preservation Commission. I think we have to visit the issue of materials. And, you know, is composite the same thing as wood? Is, you know, anything that looks like an acceptable design? Does it matter that it's made out of something, and when you drive by it and you look at it, if you can't tell the absolute difference, the question, I just think that we need to have further clarification, because, you know, we are, as he points out, have an issue around, you know, what materials are acceptable? And, you know, if we're historic, you know, what period are we talking about, and what materials were available at that time? And are those the only materials that we're going to allow to be used for issues that come before the historic preservation? I mean, there are going to be some issues that are related to energy efficiency, for instance. You know, are we going to disallow people to put in double and triple glazed windows because they weren't made in eighteen ninety, or they kind of look the same, so we're going to let it go ahead, you know, from the outside? I just think that clarification would help, just looking back to the historic district work with the Historic Preservation Commission. So, that's my issue, because I sort of agree with Mr. Crouch that it's an area that's pretty gray to me. And I don't think there's been adequate argument made for me to think that, looking at that rail, I don't think that it's going to look much better made out of wood than it does made out of this, especially in the back of the property. Here we are.
Six yes, one no.
Takes us to item fifty-one, on the vacation and conveyance of a portion of fifteen Street adjoining fourteen forty Walnut Street for the crane building redevelopment project for twelve thousand six hundred dollars. Council Communication number twelve dash two ninety. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anybody here regarding the crane building?
She is, but I'm not sure she needs to speak.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and move item fifty-one, A and B, and did receive information that they're going to indicate a correction in the ownership of the project. That'll be in the paper Sunday, because I thought that was misleading in the article yesterday. So, I'm glad for that. Thank you. Seven yes?
Item fifty-two, on the conveyance of twelve oh-two, twelve oh-four, and thirteen hundred Scott Street, the Lomar Building to Midwest Automatic Sprinkler Company, six hundred and five thousand dollars, and to continue to June twenty-fifth at five p.m. So, this conveyance is essentially a vote to continue that hearing. Anybody here seeing none? We have a motion to continue.
Seven yes?
Fifty-three, on the conveyance and vacation of vacated southwest forty-second Street and vacated Mahaska Parkway located south of Glenview Drive and River Oaks Drive to Sue Ann Kornick, trustee of the Sue A. Kornick Revocable Trust for two hundred dollars, and Kelly S. Stiles, four hundred dollars, and Sarah R. Wells, four hundred dollars. Council Communication twelve dash two eighty-six. Anybody here to speak to that? Anybody here to speak to that?
I'll move item 53.
Seven yes.
Item 54, on the proposed lease of city-owned property in the upper level of the Fifth and Keelway Parking Garage to Des Moines Daycare LLC for $41,064 for the first year, and $61,596 for subsequent years, Council Communication number 12-308. Anybody here to speak to this item?
I'll move item 54, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity, I'm really pleased with the leasing of this, and wish them luck.
Seven yes.
Item 55, on the downtown dog park, resolution improving the plan specifications form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder is Joyner Construction Company, Inc., Jeff Joyner, Vice President, $151,507.20, Council Communication number 12-289, A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anybody here to speak to this item?
I'll move 55, 55A.
Mayor, I'd like to add on this, that there's been several emails and communications about people questioning the cost on this, and the question was asked of staff, the potential for payback, and it's looking like with the increase in permits, it'd be four to five years, and I think this is a pretty good payback, and I think it's a, a good project, and I'm gonna go ahead and vote yes on this also.
I'm gonna vote yes on this, but I'm still looking forward to a, a dog park on the east side over there, and a female.
When Brian gets his library on the south side.
When I get my library? No, no, I'm before you. We already got the land taken care of over there.
The Ewing Park Dog Park is way better anyway, so.
Boo hoo. Seven yes.
There we go. All right, item 56, on the John Pat Dorian Trail renovation, resolution improving the plan specifications form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Elder Corporation, Jared R. Elder II, President, $430,000, Council Communication number 12-285, A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anybody here to speak regarding the trail renovation? Seeing none?
This'll be great, it'll complement the tentacle gardens over there, so I will move this item.
Look across the river at the west side of the dog park.
East side of the river.
Seven yes.
Item 57, on 212, 2012 Park, parking lot, ADA improvements, resolution proving the plan specifications form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation, Kurt Rasmussen, President, $133,349.35, Council Communication number 12-294, A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anybody here to speak to this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion, ADA parking lot improvements?
I'll move 57, 57A.
Seven yes.
58, on the 2012 sidewalk replacement program, the resolution proving the plan specifications form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and to receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as TK Concrete, Inc., Tony J. Vermeer, President, $292,725, Council Communication number 12-291, A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anybody here to speak to this item?
I'll move.
Item's been moved.
Seven yes.
That ends the hearing items, let's say, at 5:35. We've already had item, 59 was moved forward, and we did item 60, let's, that takes us to 61, which is declaring an official intent under the Treasury Regulation 1.150-2, to issue debt to reimburse the Des Moines Storm Water Management Utility for certain original expenditures paid in conjunction with proposed projects, A is a citywide sanitary sewer project for $1 million, and the lining of sanitary sewer trunk and lateral sewers for $5 million. B, and that's Council Communication number 12-272, item B is the citywide storm water projects, $1,200,000, the Des Moines River flood mitigation improvements, $9 million, and the storm water pump station rehabilitation for $1,100,000, Council Communication number 12-273. Is there anyone here to speak to these items regarding the Des Moines Storm Water Management Utility? Seeing none? Could we have a motion?
I'll move 61A and B.
And 62, which is review of the May 23rd, 2012 decision of the zoning board of adjustment to conditionally approve a use variance to allow temporary retention of a commercial business that involves outdoor storage and recre, of recreational vehicles at 7500 Bloomfield Road. The roll call contains alternative motions, Council Communication number 12-278. Is anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Regarding review of the zoning board of adjustment to conditionally approve the use variance.
I'll move.
Move what?
Mayor, I'd like to discuss one item on this.
Okay.
Line four, all required.
Now, hold on just a second, Brian, you've got a motion to move the main?
To allow it?
To allow it?
Yeah, and I had discussion, if, if staff, maybe Skip, this is what you're gonna ask, if staff could come up and address some of the issues that I asked earlier.
Well, I just asked about the tree planting timeline.
Okay. But I had, I had some concerns, Skip, about that, but also about sort of what exactly we're doing here, and what the Board of Adjustment actually did, can you address that? Well, I turn off my cellphone.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator for the City of Des Moines, the Board of Adjustment's decision, you may recall, the zoning of this property came to you about a month ago, a little over a month ago, Planning Commission recommended denial of a zoning to an M1 industrial classification for the property. At the time that the zoning was denied, we, staff had had meetings with the applicant, and it suggested that a use variance would be a, maybe in a more appropriate manner to, to seek this use on the property. The reasoning is, is that there can be a sunset on that variance granted, and so in the board's decision, they granted the use variance for a period of five years, subject to conditions that were listed in the blue letter, and along with that included some additional landscaping to help screen the property from Highway 69 as you run along the west side of the property, so they were all of the same conditions that the applicant had agreed to as a rezoning of the property, we just recommended those be part of a use variance instead, and it was a unanimous decision, I'm sorry, it was a 5-2 decision of the Board of Adjustment to recommend approval. I understand you mentioned condition number four, and that was that some plantings had to be done by August 31st of this year.
I think there's an issue with that timing, I think it ought to be moved to the end of October, we're still, could be in the heat of summer, it's a terrible time to be planting, especially trees, and if we wait until a cooler season, if he wants to plant them, then, that's, that's his business, but I don't think we should be, you know, we ought to, we ought to consider what's best for the trees, and extend that to, like, October 31st.
Ultimately, if they weren't in compliance with that deadline, it would take us 30 to 60 days probably to get back to the Board of Adjustment with a, with an action, and even at that time, we would probably advise that the planting was okay, as long as it was done in the fall timeframe, so you're suggesting an October timeline?
Yeah, for the landscape plantings.
Okay. I think we can work, work within that.
I'll move 62, then, if there's no other questions, with the amended timeline from Skip.
Thank you.
Okay, so essentially what happens is that goes into effect today?
Correct.
Okay.
Seven yes.
All right, that concludes the Des Moines City Council agenda, if I could have a motion to?
We have an extra item, one.
We do?
I'm just looking at it, 'cause I didn't realize until, but it's for the moratorium?
All right.
Is that correct?
I don't see it, it's none of mine yet.
Is that a carryover from last time?
Clerk, do we have another item on this agenda?
No, that was from May 23rd. No, it was the last time, sorry. Mayor, sorry.
Okay, let's start over. Thank you, sir. We now have motion to adjourn as city council and reconvene as Board of Health, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We now sit as Board of Health. Item one is approving the legal department to proceed with court action, seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at the following locations. A is 5708 Southwest Second Street, it's a fire-damaged main structure and garage structure. B is 1322 23rd Street, it's a main structure, an accessory structure. And C is 2501 24th Street, it's a nursing home structure. Is there anyone here to speak to either item one, A, B, or C? Seeing none? Could we have a motion to approve the legal department to proceed with action to abate? All right, all in favor of one, A, B, and C, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Items passed unanimously, could we have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We sit adjourned, thank you all.